Okay?
Yeah. And it's also one of the hardest, hopefully, best manage.
Very good. Thank you. Welcome, everyone. This is the Finance Committee meeting of January 22, 2019. The City Council member for the public that's here will follow after this meeting, I would think, in about 20 to 30 minutes. So we'll start with the Finance Committee and then adjourn briefly and then reconvene the City Council meeting. Director How, would you take the role?
Certainly. Honorable Mayor Robert Lansing.
Here.
Chairman Morris.
Here.
Alderman Beidler.
Here.
Alderman Rumel.
Here.
Alderman Newman.
Here.
Alderman Reisenberg.
Here.
Alderman Preschlack.
Here.
Alderman Moreno.
Here.
Alderman Bushman.
Here.
Mr. Chairman, you have a quorum.
Thank you. The first order of business is consideration of minutes from the Finance Committee meeting held on November 26, 2018. Any questions?
I move to approve those minutes.
You have a second?
Second.
A vote, Floyd. All those in favor?
I.
Close. Thank you very much. The second item on the agenda are ordinances amending the city's fee schedule and home rule sales tax for fiscal year '20 and '21. Director How, actually, it's '19, and year '19 and '20, excuse me, but Director How, please start.
Thank you, Chairman Morris. The first, these two items, Item Three and Item Four, will probably bleed together because they are related to each other. But based on direction provided by the Finance Committee at the November Capital Budget Workshop, staff is back this evening for both Finance Committee and City Council with first reading of two ordinances. One, an ordinance adopting a fee schedule with specific revisions to fees that were not included in the December 2018 action, and a second ordinance revising the city's home rule sales tax rate from a half a percent to 1%. We did prepare some slides. Copy of those slides are provided at your desk just to take through, for the public's benefit, a quick overview of what happened in November and December. So the council did previously act on a fee schedule for fiscal year '20 on December 3, 2018. It did include specific changes to fees in the categories listed here on this slide. We did not, at that time, address water rates because those were going to be discussed at the November Budget Workshop. So that item is before you this evening in the ordinance adopting the fee schedule today. So water rates, this is the slide from the November Budget Workshop. Historically, what we use is a five-year rolling average of consumption to budget revenue. We take out any spike years in which there's a significantly hot, dry summer that impacts water consumption. We didn't have that in the five-year for the FY '20 projections. This chart on the side that is listed consumption shows in light blue the budgeted consumption and in dark blue, the actual consumption. So what you can see is that the actual consumption will change and fluctuate significantly from year to year typically based on summer, summer watering and summer rainfall. However, what you see in the light blue is a general trend downward of a five-year rolling average of consumption. That is typical for most water funds. That is not unusual, but that is something that the city is going to continue to face. On the proposed rates, what you see is that the city has a combination of a fixed charge based on meter size and a variable charge, which is a rate per thousand gallons of consumption. The city currently has three tiers of consumption charges for residential customers. So there's a base rate that is paid for residential consumption up to 10,000 gallons in a quarter. There is a second rate that is charged for consumption from 11,000 to 60,000 gallons in a quarter, and then another tier rate for any residential consumption over 60,000. The all-other is a single flat rate paid for all consumption for any other categories of customers such as multifamily or commercial. At the top in the light blue, you can see the FY '19 budgeted revenue for both fixed and variable revenues. So the fixed being the meter charge, variable being consumption charges, and then the total revenue budgeted for the water fund. The middle column is the fiscal year '19 estimate based on year-to-date consumption. You can see we're projecting a slight over-budget in variable revenue for the water fund. And in FY '20, based on the rates below that are proposed for adjustment for FY '20, you can see what the budgeted revenue would be for both fixed and variable. The city has, over the last few years, worked to increase the percentage of fixed revenue coming from the water fund due to the fact that so many of the expenses in the water fund are not impacted by consumption. So lower consumption doesn't result in a reduction in those fixed charges in the budget. So we have been targeting about 20% as the goal. We were, a few years ago, about 15%. So through rate adjustments, we are moving up closer to the 20% goal. So then, in the darker blue at the bottom, you can see what the current rates are in each category and what those rates are proposed to be in FY '20. So for a small meter, the quarterly charge is proposed to increase from $40 to $43. And then you can see all the changes by category. The goal is to generate approximately 2.5%, an annual revenue increase budget to budget in the water fund. So you can see that these proposed rates are estimated to be a 2.23 overall percent revenue increase for the fund. This slide is very difficult to read, but what it is, is it's trying to generate a fiscal analysis of different levels of consumers. So we take consumption for small, low-usage residential, medium-usage residential, and high-usage residential, and then a commercial account to show the potential annual impact of those categories of consumers. So for a low-usage residential, the dollar impact annually of the proposed rates is about $17 or 4.02%. For a medium-usage residential, the dollar annual impact is $45.30. For a high-usage residential, the annual impact is projected at $153.30. And for a commercial, approximately $692,000. Of course, these will vary depending on the actual consumption by quarter of each customer, but it gives you an idea in the different category of the dollar impact. So the ordinance on both the Finance Committee and, again, City Council Agenda for First Reading of the Fee Schedule does include these proposed water rates in the fee schedule. Next is just some background regarding the funding of capital improvements. This was discussed at length at the November Budget Workshop. And based on consideration of capital needs in the capital budget and the examination of potential additional funding sources for those capital needs, we did receive the direction to come back with a proposed increase in the sanitation fee and the home rule sales tax. So those are the other two revenue items before you this evening. So just by background, in November, we did talk about how we were funding some significant capital improvements, both North Beach Access Road bluff repair, fire apparatus replacement, and Waukegan-Evert intersection improvements, three high-level capital improvements for which funding was needed. And so that slide, we discussed in November how those were going to be funded in the five-year The next was a very long list of capital projects that could not be funded in the current funding available. So the Capital Improvement Fund is the fund in which most general capital improvements are budgeted. Currently, with the current revenue sources, there's about $3.3 million available per year for those capital improvements. That include road and bridge, technology, capital equipment, park and recreation, and other different categories of improvements. So the council did consider in November the recommended funded projects and then also saw the detail of those projects that could not be funded with revenue sources available. What I've done here is summarize them by year of the five-year CIP and then by category. So Priority 1 NF are projects in the Capital Improvement Fund that were rated as a Priority 1, the highest level of priority, but funding was not available. And you can see the funds that would be needed in each year to fund those projects. The second category is grant-funded projects. So these are projects that are designated for approval only if grant funding is made available for those improvements. The line that you see in the second row, Grant City, that is the projected city match. So that is the funding that the city would have to come up with in order to fund their share of those projects. The third line is grant funds. So that would be the funds that we would hope to generate. That's the grant funds that we would hope to get to fund those projects. So in a lot of cases, projects are 80/20, so 80% grant-funded and the city has to pay a 20% match. So those are not funds that the city would have to pay out, but it is grant funds that the city would need to secure in order for those projects to proceed. And then Priority 2 and 3 are capital projects that cannot be funded but are only prioritized as Priority 2 or Priority 3, not as high priority as Priority 1. I've graded out the grant funds line in the Priority 2 and 3 because in the Home Rule Sales Tax FAQ, we talk about $10 million in unfunded projects over the five years. That is the first two lines. So those are the Priority 1 NF and the city match associated with grant-funded projects. If you take into account the grant funding that would need to be procured and the Priority 2 and 3 projects, that total is actually $30 million. But we just thought it was important to clarify the different groups and the different numbers that you see. The other concerns that were noted by the Finance Committee at the November Budget Meeting was the Forest Hill Storm Sewer Project, which was funded for FY '21, but there was concerns about waiting another year for those improvements. Storm sewer projects every third year extend to fiscal year '64, so there's identified storm sewer projects. In priority order, they're intended to be funded every third year when street resurfacing is funded from motor fuel tax monies. But only being allowed to do those improvements every three years extends the timeline out for those projects. So that was a concern that we discussed at the November meeting. And finally, ravine needs are still in discovery. So there's a recognition that there's a financial impact associated with ravine improvements that are needed, but they are still being studied. And so we haven't gotten a good list of those improvements or monetized the improvements that are needed. So with that, with the identification of the various projects that could not be funded, at the November Budget Workshop, the Finance Committee spent a lot of time talking about potential funding sources for those projects. So I just wanted to quickly review that for the benefit of the public who may not have been in attendance at the Budget Meeting. So in the Capital Improvement Fund, we have a fund balance target of $1 million. There are some available funds, 400,000 released from the ERP projects, some reserves in addition to the 1 million fund balance target. Grant funds are pending. We still have grant reimbursement requests at the state that have not been paid to us, so that would increase the available dollars. At the time, we did not know for sure how much donations we would receive on North Beach Access Road repairs. So those donations also increase available funds. And then the TIF note repayments are not contemplated in the immediate future. Those would still be a few years out before that TIF increment revenue would be available for capital improvements. We also have a half a percent sales tax fund. So this is the fund in which the current half a percent home rule sales tax revenue is deposited. It is currently used to pay off bond obligations that were issued in 2003 and 2004 to make storm sewer improvements, but we talked about the fact that that debt service ends in fiscal year '24. So within a few years in fiscal year '25, about $600,000 a year would be available for capital improvement funding. And finally, the Water Capital Fund, we have available reserves and the debt capacity in the water fund improved significantly in fiscal year '24 and '25 when some major bond debt service from 2004 finally matures and gives us excess capacity. So while we're not discussing Water Capital Fund improvements today, we did at the November Budget Meeting, so. So then we looked at additional funding sources. So there was a few that we looked at and discussed in detail at the November Budget Meeting. The first was property tax. So this is just a chart that shows the impact of an additional $500,000 in the property tax levy for any given year. So we use the 2018 levy that was approved in December. An additional $500,000 on the levy would have resulted in a 4.69% increase to the levy instead of the 3.1% that was approved. And to an average household, that would have meant $140 increased instead of the $87 The next source was home rule sales tax. Home rule sales tax can be increased in quarter percent increments. So currently, the city has a half a percent home rule sales tax. What this map did was showed the different comparable rates in communities surrounding us just to show where surrounding communities were from a tax rate. But what is included on this chart for those entities that have a dot in there, so it's dotted, they have a food and beverage tax. So that is typically a 1% assessed solely on restaurants, dining establishments, that is administered by that community locally and is added on top of their typical sales tax rate. So we just wanted to give the committee an idea of where communities surrounding us were from a tax rate. A change from a half a percent to 1% generates $600,000 in additional revenue annually. Another funding source we looked at was the sanitation fee. The sanitation fee is currently $8 per month. The committee considered the fact that each $1 per month addition would generate about $76,000 in additional annual revenue. And then the discussion topic on allocation of funds up through the current year, the sanitation fee has been put in the Capital Improvement Fund. The committee concurred and the City Council approved a switch. So that sanitation fee in FY '20 will be in the General Fund, funding the operations of the Sanitation Division of Public Works Department. And the same amount of revenue has been moved from the property tax levy in the General Fund to the Capital Fund, so it's simply just an exchange of that. But it more closely aligns the sanitation fee with its intended use. And finally, the last revenue source we looked at was the potential for a stormwater utility fee. This is not widely used by communities, but we did talk about these communities who currently do have a stormwater utility fee, how they assess that, and what that charge represents to an average residence per month. So that would require significant startup work and a lot of study. Would not be a funding source for FY '20, but should the committee decide to have staff study it, we would need about a year to really do the examination that we would need to do to give good numbers to the council. So as a result of all of that discussion in November, we were given the following direction. First, as noted, was to move the sanitation fee to the General Fund for FY '20 and to transfer the same amount of property tax to the Capital Fund. No impact overall in additional revenue. Proceed with the water rates as recommended for operations. We looked at potentially funding INI repairs, but those would be funded from water fund reserves. Proceed with an increase in the sanitation fee from $8 a month to $12 a month. That item is also incorporated in the ordinance adopting the fee schedule before you this evening. Also, to proceed with an increase in the home rule sales tax rate from a half a percent to 1%, this would be effective July 1, 2019. So we would only receive 10 months of revenue the first year, closer to $500,000, and then $600,000 beginning in FY '21. The reason for that is that the Department of Revenue only accepts changes in home rule sales tax rates on January 1 and July 1. And then combine the sanitation fee and sales tax increases, which would generate approximately $900,000 in annual revenue, would be used for capital expenditures.
A lot of time and effort went into this.
Well done.
Over many months.
So.
Will you turn it to questions from the council? Alderman Moreno.
I have a couple of questions, if I may. On the water fund forecast, do we share that forecast with, for any reason, for example, with bond issuance at that time? Do we make our assumptions in our forecast available to bondholders? And I'm especially coming around to the 2.5% increase that's estimated or is our goal on an annualized basis. Why is that our goal?
So in our five-year forecast for the water fund, we use 2.5% as our average annual increase in revenues just for the five-year forecasting purposes. It could be 3%. It could be different. What we do want to avoid is not foregoing water rate adjustments for a couple of years and then having to have a significant increase. So the council has always, traditionally with the water fund, because it's not tax-supported and fully self-supporting, done an annual increase to the water rates just to reflect cost of personnel increases and other operational cost increases. As to the bond writing agencies, because we issue water-related debt as general obligation, so we pledge our full faith and credit, they don't get that deeply into the revenue estimates. If we issued them as revenue bonds, they probably would look more closely at that.
And I know in the water rates, we have, in my time on council, always talked about this balance, not only between fixed and variable, but also by usage. Could I ask you, for the benefit of everyone, would you talk about that a little bit and just give some insight into how that balance has struck and how you see it from a finance perspective?
Sure. So a few years ago, we made a major structural shift in the water rates. And we wanted to go to a tiered rate for residential, but we also wanted to significantly increase the percentage of fixed revenue being generated and not leave so much to variable summer consumption and summer weather issues. So what we did was we created that bottom tier of the first 10,000 gallons, and we lowered that rate to what it had been before to offset the increase in the fixed rate charge with the intention that the small users would not be impacted by that shift and would not be, because a fixed charge is going to affect lower consumption users more than higher consumption users. So that low tier, that first 10,000 at a discounted rate, is intended to offset that for low-usage residential customers.
Thank you. One last question, if I may. On the five-year CIP breakout, thank you for doing that. Would you please give some background to the 2021 grant funds? That's a big number.
So it is a very big number because it includes the underpass at the West Side Train Station, which I think is about 12 million of the 15 that you see.
Thank you.
Other questions from the council? If not, there's a lot of information here. Maybe I'll see if there are any questions from the public before we move on. If not, thank you. Please proceed.
Okay. So the first item on your agenda would just be consideration by the committee.
I thought I saw.
You have a question? No. Well, you'll have to come up.
Is this a time? Did this bring up a question?
Yeah, come on up. Let's do this one at a time because there's a lot on this agenda. So rather than waiting all the way to the end and then, so come up and identify yourself and you'll have three minutes for your comments.
I don't even need that much. Thank you so much. I'm Joanna Rollick, the Executive Director of the Chamber of Commerce. And what I wanted to do was bring to you the perspective of small businesses. The topic of the increase in the sales tax was brought forward to us at the recent Chamber of Commerce Board of Directors meeting. And we had three retailers at the table, and what I wanted to share with you was their perspective. And that is that they're concerned about the perception if this sales tax is raised on general merchandise. All three are general merchandisers, if you will. And we received some information that also showed that in Vernon Hills, it's 7.25% sales tax, which is great competition for our retailers, and in Libertyville, 7%. So to raise it to 8% was something that they were concerned about. And they also voiced at the same time, which I'll just leave with you, not for this conversation, of course, but the fact that there are other communities that will offer some business incentives and some support for small businesses that are looking to continue to do business in communities like ours but are competing against, obviously, the Internet and larger retailers, national and regional chains. So I just wanted to share that. So there is great concern.
Great. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Any comments on that before we move on?
Well, yeah, there's a lot of variables in that thought. And yes, outliers are Vernon Hills and Libertyville who have large shopping districts and auto malls and generate millions and millions of dollars of sales tax. So there's a, and who are, in effect, competing with Lake Cook Road. And they're trying to draw people north. So it's, they're outliers. And so then you have to ask yourself a question for 1% of an item. Would someone spend the time and the gas to go to Hawthorne to buy something? So not being nitpicky and playing games, but it's, we have, relative to our competition of the village shopping experience, you know, been the lowest for some time. We're really just bringing ourselves into the middle of the pack here.
All right. Thank you. Thank you very much.
And the other point, I just, for clarity, Vernon Hills and Libertyville are two communities that have a 1% food and beverage tax. So what's interesting is that the proposed change would take the city to 8% across the board, whereas in Vernon Hills, there's 7.25 on non-dining, but 8 and 1/4 on dining. So we spent a little time in November talking about that and why communities may make the decision to go with a local and locally administered tax on a segment of establishments rather than an overall. So I think the advantage for us is that going through the home rule sales tax requires no administration by the city staff. So there's no increased cost to collecting that revenue, which there is with the local taxes. But I think, but she absolutely brings up a good point on the non-dining establishment.
Yeah, these are not costless decisions.
Very good. Thank you. Director How, so do you want to talk about the five-year capital program or was that pretty well? Go ahead.
Okay. So the two ordinances will be on your City Council agenda for first reading. On the capital plan update, these kind of bleed into, you know, the first item kind of bleeds into this one, which is how that $900,000 would be allocated to non-funded projects through the capital program. So this slide was included in your packet for benefit of the public. What we do in the Capital Improvement Fund is we use the 10-year actual history of improvements by category, and we use a target approach in our capital fund budgeting so that $3.3 million by year is allocated to certain categories of expenditures. Most of those remain constant in all years except for storm sewer and road and bridge. So every third year, street resurfacing is funded from the motor fuel tax fund, and then we slot a major storm sewer improvement. So that's why you see every third year a change between the road and bridge and storm sewer categories. So the question became if there was $900,000 in additional revenue, so we went from 3.3 to 4.2 million, how would that be allocated? So these are the recommended changes and targets going forward with 4.2 million instead of 3.3. There has been, for a couple of years, discussion about ravines and whether ravines should be an independent funding category in the CIP plan. So that is what is proposed with annual allocated funds to a ravine category. And then you can see the other changes. Those are certainly not set in stone and will likely be discussed in detail at the March Budget Workshop, but we wanted to give you an idea of the staff's thinking, at least. The table at the bottom, I think, is important because there are several things that have changed since November. So in the additional revenue category in the General Fund, we're getting closer now that we're that we're starting to put the operating budget together in the general fund. We've looked at what our estimated expenses are going to be in '19 and where there might be savings, and how our revenues compare to projected spending in the general fund in FY '20. So, currently, we estimate that in FY '19, we budgeted a $1 million transfer from the general fund to the capital improvement fund. We believe that can be 1.6. So, that adds another $600,000 in available funding for capital improvements. And we're also currently forecasting in FY '20, the ability to transfer 500,000 from the general fund to the capital fund. So, those revenues are shown in the year after they're generated. So, we kind of want to generate the revenue, transfer to the capital improvement fund, program it for expense in the next year. The next, you can see the impact of the sales tax increase, slightly lower in the first year because of it being 10 months instead of 12, and then the sanitation fee increase generating about $300,000 a year in additional funding. And then North Beach Access Road donations, while we haven't received them all from the foundation, we're working with an estimate, a working total of 650,000. So, that can now be programmed and becomes revenue available for the capital improvement fund as well. So, you can see the current year additional available by year from our meeting in November, target adjustments, drawing down about 900,000, and then also, based on concerns that the Finance Committee expressed, an accelerating of the Forest Hill Storm Sewer Project from FY '21 to FY '20. So, that is just some early kind of estimates on how that, you know, what the revenue is and how it might be allocated. What we did recognize is that in that FY '20 and FY '21 might be treated a little differently than the targets, just because we've got very good estimates of costs on projects that can't be funded. And so, this is the working list of specific projects that were included on the list for FY '20 and FY '21 that could not be funded, that would likely be recommended for funding with the additional revenues. So, we've talked about Forest Hill Storm Sewer. We would add additional street resurfacing. Currently, the funding for street resurfacing in FY '20 is about half what it normally would be, about 500,000 versus 1 million. So, we would hope to add funds to that group. And then, specific projects for North Beach Parking Lot, Waukegan Wesley Intersection Engineering only, because that needs to be done in order to submit for grant funding, Forest Avenue Parking Lot, Fire Department Locker Room, Streets, Deer Pass Streetscape, and then beginning work on high-priority ravine improvements, so Ringwood, McCormick, and Rosemary Ravines Design and Engineering in '20, and then begin construction in '21. And then for '21, because we don't anticipate Waukegan Everett Intersection Construction to occur until '21, we can swap, we essentially swapped that with Forest Hill, because it was slated for FY '20. Because of accelerating Forest Hill, we would just move the Waukegan Everett to '21, Deer Pass Sidewalk and Wall, South Park Entrance Drive, and then begin construction on ravine improvement. So, an early list for those who might want to have an idea of where those dollars would be spent if approved in at least the first two years. But we would bring these to the March Budget Meeting and receive confirmation from the Finance Committee on the specific projects that we want to add to the five-year CIP with the revenue. But.
Very good. Questions from the council?
What is the Deer Path wall?
Did you notice we can build our wall cheaper than the other one?
Better price.
Yeah, that's right. I think everyone knows that we've been working with IDOT for a number of years regarding the storm sewer project at Deer Path and '41, and the construction of a new storm sewer system there, right adjacent to the golf course. Part of that looks at that sidewalk that goes from, I guess it's a Wani, down underneath '41. And with some of the work that's there, I think there's a safety concern that, and while we say a wall, it's probably more of a railing or something that makes sure that no children or pedestrians who are on that will fall into Deer Path in that adjacent area. So, the idea is to plan at approximately the same time that the state would be doing the construction project.
Thank you.
Very good. Any questions from the public? If not, I think we'll move on to the next item, which is Assistant Manager, Mike Strong.
Good evening, members of Finance Committee. This evening, I am back with an update on the 2019 Core Elective Service List. As you recall, back in November, at the workshop, we reviewed a preliminary list and discussed some modifications that were suggested at that time by staff. The service listing is a critical component of the annual budget process. Each year, the staff reviews the list, and it helps guide budgetary decisions within each of the operating departments. So, we typically review that late fall, early winter, and look for concurrence and approval from the Finance Committee in January. So, this evening, we've included our latest round of final edits, which are included for your review. Majority of these suggested modifications are cleanup language to help clarify, simplify some of the language in terms of the service descriptions. There is an additional service that was included to reflect a new contractual arrangement that the Fire Department has. So, that's been incorporated. And I understand that there have also been some additional requests that have come through since. So, you know, that, those will be some additional modifications that we can incorporate. But, you know, looking for direction from the committee this evening on the document, if there are any questions, we have staff as well that can answer those, or I can help clarify if there were any points of interest that any of the aldermen, any of you have. But we will be looking for direction this evening to proceed, so that we can incorporate that into the budget document that we'll be reviewing later in March. So, with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions or address any concerns you have at this time.
Any questions? Being done. We need to approve this. Is that a voice, voice, voice vote? Do I have a motion to approve?
Some of.
Is that a good? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Pose? Nay? Okay. Thank you. Thanks very much. Now, we come to other business. Director Hubble, maybe you want to come back up, because I know you have some ancillary comments as we go through these. There's not a lot to talk about here, but just running down the list, we published the December 2018 Flash Report. Any questions on that? None. We included the draft information technology proposal for the five-year capital improvement program. Any questions for Director Hubble? I'm not being nitty. Here's an interesting one. Item three, the IMRF revision on investment returns. And we've, Alderman Newman and I have worked on that on our front, reducing the returns to 7%. But would you like to comment on that in terms of the impact?
Just for the benefit of the public, so the Illinois Municipal Retirement Fund is the fund that covers all non-public safety, full-time employees of the city. They administer that not by the state, but at a statewide level. It's a completely independent board from the state pension funds. But those decisions are made for all IMRF employers, whereas with Police and Fire, the city makes its own actuarial assumptions, and each community does that. But, so, Illinois Municipal Retirement Fund has decided to lower their interest rate assumption from 7.5% to 7.25%. That will be taken into account at the actuarial valuations of 12/31/19, so that will first impact the city in calendar year 2020. So, we should all anticipate a lowering of the funded ratio and an increase in the contribution rate because of that interest rate assumption change. But that is something that we're seeing quite a lot of pension funds do, is to lower the investment rate assumption. For Police and Fire, the city lowered theirs from 7.5% to 7% in 2013. Hennessy has talked about lowering it even further, just to reflect, you know, investments and the ability for those assumptions to hold in actual investment returns for those funds.
Any questions? Solomon Bushman.
What sort of significant impact do you see to our contribution requirements for this change in the IRF rate?
So, it's hard to tell, because it will largely be measured by their return on investment in '19. So, if they can generate a fairly high investment return, it could offset quite a bit of that contribution rate increase from the lowered assumption. But should we have significant challenges in the investment market and see returns, you know, of 6% or 6.5%, then it would be exacerbated by the assumption change. So, it's very difficult to measure right now. We benefit from the fact that we're currently 98.83% funded, so we're nearly 100% funded. We're not amortizing a large liability, so that's beneficial. In the last few years, we've been seeing drops in the employer rate, but we've been conservative from a budgeting perspective. So, I think if the investments could come in fairly close to the assumption for '19, we'll probably be fine.
Alderman Moreno.
Maybe another way to ask the same question. Would you speak to the historical performance of the IMRF? I perceive they've done a very good job in the past.
They have done a very good job in the past, yes. They do quite well. And I don't have the return, but we do have that available on the website. So, if we have any time on the financial transparency, I'll pull up that slide.
Alderman Newman.
Take a moment to explain. For instance, lowering the assumption from 7.5% to 7.25% increases our contribution rate, because the return assumption is less. So, we have to make that up with higher contributions. But explain the impact of, let's say, five years from now, we look back and see that the five-year return was 5.5%. What impact does that, then, have on our contributions, if any? I'm trying to make sure the public understands the difference between these return assumptions and what that does to our calculation and what actual market performance does.
Absolutely. So, the interest rate assumption is the assumption the actuary is making on your investment return of your assets going forward. So, it's a future predictor. So, if you're using 7.25% as your assumed return going forward, that is calculated in the liability, the future liability of all benefits under the plan. If you fail to make that assumption in any given year, then it lowers your funded ratio and creates a higher liability to amortize, which then results in higher contribution rates. So, as you lower the interest rate assumption, you lower your funded ratio, increase your contribution, but you reduce the potential impact of not meeting your assumption.
All right. So, this is really at the cornerstone of what being conservative is all about, is we lower our assumptions, we decrease our exposure to future poor performance, correct?
Right. Exactly right.
Okay. Thank you.
Any questions? If not, we'd move on to item number four, which are the accounting policies and procedures update. Alderman Hubble? Director Hubble?
So, this is the final update. We are now all complete with the accounting policies and procedures. These came about a little over a year ago at a special meeting last in December of 2017. These seven recommendations have been worked on throughout the year. The one that we were waiting on was number five with the ERP. So, the city's been transitioning their financial software to BSNA software. We are now live on the core financials, allowing for improved reporting on adherence to purchasing policies and practices. So, those reports are being generated and provided to the City Council Finance Chairman and the City Manager each month. So, that was the last item that we needed to cross off the list. So, that is done. And then, we did in October at the Audit Committee, as presented in November by the Audit Committee Chair, received results of the audit of the contingency account. So, those were the two items still pending the last time we did an update.
Questions?
Can I make a comment?
Yes, please.
I remember when we saw the need to make these suggestions, and I just want to say that I'm really pleased and that it's been done. And I want to say thank you to the people who worked hard on it, because I didn't. But I recognize the importance, and I am very respectful of the time you put into it. I don't know who all was involved in doing this, but thank you for getting it done.
Well, you're very welcome, and there was a lot of people involved, so.
They know who they are.
Certainly not just me. They know who they are. But, you know, it has changed the practices in all operating departments. I have to give credit, because, you know, the departments are having to change the way they purchase and the way they have purchased for a very long time. So, kudos to them for having kind of that retraining and change in process that's happened over the last year.
Particular thanks for your leadership and that of Alderman Morris.
Other questions? Not item five. I just wanted to comment on, for item five, the Pension Subcommittee has created two open letters to the community about our pensions and the funding of pensions, which are hopefully being published in the press and will be published on our website. And in the context of that, Director Hubble has gone back to the website to implement changes to the financial transparency part of the website. So, she's just going to talk briefly about that.
Yeah. So, we have changed the look and feel of the financial transparency section. So, if you go to the homepage and you go to the quick links at the top right, you can just select financial transparency. You'll come to this page. There's, right now, four links, these pictures. But we certainly envision that we can certainly add to those as time goes by. So, the first one, the financial documents, will just link to the listing of financial documents, allow people to review budget documents, annual treasures, reports, CAFers, and what have you. The OpenGov, the interactive charts and graphs, we've had available on the website for a while. So, this will just take you to that OpenGov location, where you can look at data that's been prepared based on certain questions, or you can flip over and create your own charts and graphs to kind of look at the information that you want to look at. And then, bottom right, the property tax information. We've got some interesting, a 10-year trend on property taxes and how they were allocated to different uses, and information on where property tax dollars go. That's a common slide we use at the ward meeting, but it was nice to put that on the website. And then, brand new is the pensions. We've talked about this for a while, having a specific place on the website where we could just put pension-related information. If you go to that link, it's pretty exhaustive, and you can go through, and there's a lot of text, but a lot of charts and graphs on funded ratios and investment return assumptions and investment rate or investment return history by plan. So, you can look at IMRF, Police and Fire separate. The two letters that Chairman Morris spoke to is there. The Pension Primer, which you've seen in different versions, has been updated as of December 18th, and that is available there. And then, a comprehensive PowerPoint regarding the changes that Lake Forest has been making in their approach to funding public safety pension, which is pretty unique. And I certainly appreciate the Pension Subcommittee's support on that. It has meant increased funding for Police and Fire pension, but it definitely puts the city in a better position for the long term. So, all that information is available, and should you look and not find something you're looking for, let me know, because we can certainly add it.
Thank you. Questions? Alderman Moreno? Yes?
Are there any charts that are not included in the interactive session, section, that you use regularly?
You know, what I think we're probably going to do is look at the Flash Report and have the Flash Report available on the website under Financial Transparency. You see that each month. It kind of gives you an idea of where some significant revenue sources are compared to budget and how they're trending. The overall fund summary is kind of interesting to see where revenues and expenses are by fund. Fund accounting is a really different, difficult concept to explain to people who aren't used to it, but it's a requirement for us to use fund accounting and separate funds based on their intent and use. But that is one thing I think would be helpful to add. And then, we're committed to working on the check register. That clearly was very difficult with the old software. It's going to be very easy with BSNA, so we would expect to have that check register added and updated regularly, so.
Thank you. I would certainly echo Prue's comments to you and to the Finance Chair. You've done an excellent job.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you. The last item is an opportunity for the public to bring non-agenda items to the committee. Seeing none, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second? All of them in favor?
Aye.
We're adjourned.
We'll take a five-minute or so break, and
We'll take a five-minute or so break and then commence council. All right. Alderman Moreno?
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First item of business is reports of city officers. For myself, really just one appointment, which is the appointment of Jim Sikora to the Building Review Board from Ward Two. They have a motion and a second.
So moved.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Seeing none, the motion carries. Next item is really informational. Mayor's appointment to the Lake Forest Collaborative for Environmental Leadership with Alderman Preschlack standing forward, as he does so willingly, to replace Alderman Reisenberg, and we thank him for his years of service. Thank you. No council action is required. A handshake is taking place.
I saw another action.
I was told I was taking over.
I don't think there's a player to be named later. With that, for the very last time, comments by the City Manager.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Before we hear from Mr. Thomas, let me just make one other announcement, that the Waukegan Settler Square Business District Working Group, their next meeting is a week from tonight, so on Tuesday, the twenty-ninth, they meet from six-thirty to eight at Fire Station Two over on Telegraph Road, and it's open to the public, so anybody interested in offering comments to the working group, please attend. Hopefully, the weather will cooperate as well. Speaking of which, before you jump in, Mr. Thomas, what is the weather forecast for tonight?
Fleet is out. It is out. We have salted the whole town, and we've got all of our salt trucks out. We're expecting about four inches or so tonight, so the saga continues. Anyone want to join us?
The city never sleeps, or at least Public Works never sleeps.
That's right.
Mr. Mayor, members of the City Council, we'd like to provide this evening an update on the North Beach Access Road Ravine and bluff repair. If you can remember way back when, when we had our failure in the ravine, these are some of the pictures before, but as of January twenty-second, the ravine portion is ninety-eight percent complete. We have basically Phase One landscaping, which is black dirt, seed, and blanket. That will happen when the weather warms up and the snow melts. The good news is Keno Construction has signed up with the neighbor, the McDonnas, to actually do the work on their wall. So they are finishing up construction on the ravine. They're going to immediately start on that wall. So the coordination, the symmetry is very, very good for both of us. Phase Two landscaping will actually occur probably in about a year or two. We need things, I think Cliff Miller wants to see things take a bit and get the pH in the soils up, so we will go from there. This is going to be just a very quick video of the ravine project. You are going to see a lot of white stone. The large portion of the white stone, the CA-six, which is small, that is going to be covered up with black dirt and seed and blanket. So I preface all this, when people see this, they're going to say, oh gee. It'll get better. This was actually taken about two or three days before it's, you know, finished. That area right there is the area that will be covered, this area here, with the black dirt, seed, and blanket. That's all the CA-six. That's the roadway with the ravine adjacent to it. That white stone, that will be staying, but that's the stone that is essentially slowing up the movement of the water, and that's really what we're trying to do with this ravine. The forest park, moving on to the bluff repair. I remember Alderman Preschlack, you saying July second is the key date. We are going to do our best to hit July second. As you can see on the schedule, it is going to be difficult. We are actually, and I'll take everyone through the schedule, we are actually reviewing the final design on Thursday. AECOM has the plans completed. We're going to sit down with a bunch of staff and go through. We plan on putting the project out to bid on February fifth. We will have a mandatory onsite pre-bid meeting with any interested contractor on the eleventh. We'll have a bid opening on the nineteenth, bring the bids to our Public Works Committee on the twenty-first, come to council on March fourth. We are then going to have to spend some time passing contracts, insurance, bonds, all that, and then the contractor will mobilize, begin. But when we spoke with, and we worked with Keno, if you remember, in the fall, where they laid out truly the number of days, when I was talking to them today, they said, this is going to be real difficult unless we get some very good weather in the spring to hit it, to hit that July second. There's going to be over two thousand semis of CA-six stone that's going to be brought down. It's a lot of stone, and we've looked into the whole barge issue. It's actually much cheaper trucking the material in. So that is the downside to the schedule, but we are at least on time with the design. We're going to be putting it out to bid on time, and we are simply hoping for good weather because the contractor, we told, hit it. So with that, if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer. On the right-hand side, you can see the roadway, this is, we have the new, no, it's not working. The lighter side, the coloring is the actual new roadway that actually has a softer bend, softer curve than the current roadway. The current roadway has the darker lines, the softer one has the hash lines. So that is the design. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer.
Lots of time put in on this, a lot of time and effort. Thank you.
And Alderman Preschlack, I told him if I was still going to be City Manager, we'd hit that July date. I can't commit for the next guy, so.
No promises.
He's not even here, you throw him under the bus.
That's right. That's what we city managers do, I guess.
Your first consulting contract.
You could be my agent. I like that. And that completes my final report to the City Council.
Say it ain't so. Mike couldn't have been a better transition. Mike was a young man when you hired him.
That's right.
And local Lake Forest High School product, and he's grown up quite a lot, and been to the Robert R. Kylie School of Municipal Management.
Still a young man, though.
Still a young man. Anyway, you're a fine product of the Kylie School of Management. Okay, thank you. So report, committee reports. Finance Committee, the Government Finance Officers of America have a distinguished budget award presentation for us to make. Alderman Morris, Chairman of the Finance Committee.
Very good, thank you. I'd like to read this because the Government Finance Association is a big deal in the country. So the City of Lake Forest has been awarded the Government Finance Officers Association Distinguished Budget Presentation Award for the fiscal year two thousand nineteen budget document. The award has been granted to the city for the third consecutive year. The distinguished budget presentation award is the highest form of recognition in governmental budgeting, and it's an attainment of a significant accomplishment by a government and its management. In a September second news release, the GFOA states that in order to receive the budget award, the entity, the city, had to satisfy nationally recognized guidelines for effective budget presentation. These guidelines are designed to assess how well an entity's budget serves as a policy document, a financial plan, and an operations guide, and a communications device. I just commented that there are eighty-nine thousand units of local government in the United States, and this is awarded to only one-point-eight percent of those units. So in addition to the budget award, a certificate of recognition for budget preparation is presented by the GFOA to an individual designated as instrumental in their government unit's achievement of this award. So we're very pleased to present this award to our Director of Finance, Elizabeth Howe. Please come forward.
Thank you. Next is consideration of an ordinance approving a fee schedule and an ordinance amending the city's home rule sales tax rate from half of one percent to one percent. This will be a first reading of this ordinance. Elizabeth will present along the same lines as not so many minutes ago.
Right, so rather than repeat the presentation I just gave at the Finance Committee meeting, the action this evening, as directed by the Finance Committee at the November Budget Workshop, is to present for first reading approval to ordinances, an ordinance amending the fee schedule of the City of Lake Forest for fiscal year two thousand twenty. The proposed changes in this ordinance are, in addition to those that you approved in December, they reflect changes in water rates and an increase in the sanitation fee from eight dollars per month to twelve dollars per month, and a very small minor change to community development, building permit, credit card fees to match our provider through BSNA Invoice Cloud. So that's a very minor, non-financial-related item, but we wanted to change that while we were updating the fee schedule. The second ordinance is an ordinance amending the city's home rule sales tax, currently at half a percent. It would go to one percent effective July first, two thousand nineteen. That would generate about five hundred thousand dollars in additional revenue the first year, ten months of the year, and then six hundred thousand going forward for a full year. I'm happy to address any questions or anything that was omitted from the earlier presentation to the Finance Committee, but again, first reading approval for both ordinances.
Thank you. Again, this is a step we're taking very thoughtfully and carefully. Over the past several months, it's been discussed a number of times at budget workshops and other interaction between council and city staff. Any questions, comments, thoughts from council? Seeing none, is any comment from the audience regarding?
I just had a comment. I want to echo what you said. I don't think anybody wants to raise taxes for no reason. I think you did a great job describing the infrastructure challenges that we have and the capital projects that we have, both funded and unfunded in the community. And I want to assure the taxpayers as well that these projects are managed very well, and a testament to that is the ERP project. When there's a four hundred thousand dollar, you know, kind of rebate from that project, that's almost unheard of. So I really want to applaud the city staff and you, Elizabeth, on being good custodians of our capital and managing these projects very, very well. And I don't think anybody here on the council wants to raise taxes without good cause and without being good stewards of our taxpayers' money, so thank you.
And if I could just add a little bit to that, too. We've heard from the Chamber of Commerce, and don't take those comments lightly. I think everyone here on the council is very sensitive to our retail business establishments in the city and certainly want them to thrive and have carefully considered, I think every single one of us, whether we think this will negatively impact our beloved businesses in this city, and sincerely hope that it won't. And from the information we've been given, we really don't think that that is going to happen, and let's hope it doesn't.
Exactly. And I'll say that I don't like it, but I don't have a better alternative.
You speak for everyone. Well, thank you. Any comment from the audience regarding this ordinance? Seeing none, bring it back to council and ask for a motion to grant first reading to the two proposed ordinances. So moved. This is a roll call vote.
Alderman Midler?
Aye.
Alderman Morris?
Aye.
Alderman Newman?
Aye.
Alderman Rubble?
Aye.
Alderman Reisenberg?
Aye.
Alderman Preschlack?
Aye.
Alderman Moreno?
Aye.
Alderman Bushman?
Aye.
Eight ayes, zero nays. First reading motion carries.
Thank you.
Can I just ask a point of order? Should those have been separate votes for two different ordinances?
It's okay to combine the two of them into one vote. If any member had wanted to have them voted on separately because maybe they wanted to vote differently, then the council should have allowed that, but it appeared that everybody was okay with the one motion.
Next item on the agenda is opportunity for citizens to address council. Is there anyone in the audience who'd like to speak to council?
Good evening, Mayor, City Council. My name is David Lamarty. I'm the former City Manager of Highland Park. The only thing that would get me here tonight to another city council meeting is to pay tribute to my friend Bob Kylie. Bob and I have been dear friends for forty years. Doesn't seem like forty years, but it has been. I've watched Bob grow as a leader and a person, a person of great character, since he replaced me in Willmett as the Assistant Village Manager in nineteen eighty-two. I've spent a great deal of time with Bob. I've worked with him personally and professionally, and I could tell you unequivocally, there's no person that has greater integrity, no person who has better judgment, and no person I'd rather be in a foxhole with than Bob. So thank you for letting him go, because now I have a golf partner all the time. Sorry, Allison. And I should have mentioned also, no one loves his family more than Bob. So Bob, you're my man.
Well, those are three very high, if not the highest, standards of integrity, judgment, and who you'd rather be in a foxhole with, so understood and appreciated.
Drew? Drew? We're not quite there yet.
Okay. I'm just here to echo Dave. First of all, that's it.
Okay, okay. We're not there yet?
No. Is this stage? Drew has a park. Drew has a...
Drew has a part. Oh, it's coming.
Oh, I don't think I've seen the script, but go ahead.
Unfortunately, we have the world record of omnibus vote matters this year, or tonight, only 21, to separating us from other comments about our friend Bob. So, I will read these. I have a few comments about them. First, I'm required to read these, by the way, unless you think I'm doing this for fun. First is approval of the December 3rd, 2018 city council meeting minutes. Two, approval of the check register for the period November 22nd, 2018 through January 11th, 2019. Three, approval of resolutions required for bank purposes to amend authorized signers on city bank accounts. Four, ratification of a naming rights agreement related to a renovation project at Forest Park. Five, approval of a resolution authorizing the sale of city property to the city manager. Six, waive the bidding process and authorizing the purchase and service agreement with Motorola Solutions for the purchase of Starcom Police Radios for the Police Department from state bid vendor Motorola Solutions in the amount of $315,345. Seven, waive the bidding process, approve the purchase of MSA self-contained breathing apparatus, and accept an assistance to firefighters grant in the amount of $213,086. Eight, waive the bidding process and authorizing the purchase with Motorola Solutions for the purchase of dual-band portable radios for the fire department from state bid vendor Motorola Solutions. Nine, ratification and approval of asset health wellness contract for city employees. Ten, waive the bidding process and approve the replacement of two five-yard dump trucks for the streets and water and sewer sections included in the fiscal year 2020 capital equipment budget to JX Peterbilt in the net amount of $191,156, and Lindco equipment sales in the amount of $307,258. Waive the bidding, and number 11, waive the bidding process and approve the replacement of Forestry's log loader to standard equipment in the amount of $170,287, and Runyon Equipment in the net amount of $84,658. Twelve, consideration of a recommendation from staff to authorize reimbursement to Lake County Forest Preserve District for plantings in the Middle Fork Savannah. Thirteen, consideration of a resolution relating to an amendment to the Bannockburn-Lake Forest jurisdictional boundary agreement. Fourteen, consideration of a recommendation from staff to authorize the city manager to enter into a new contract with Elevator Inspection Services Company. Fifteen, consideration of a recommendation of the Plan Commission in support of the approval and final plat of condominium for the first condominium building in the Kelmscott Park Development at Laurel and Western Avenues. Sixteen, consideration of a recommendation from the Plan Commission in support of approval of re-subdivision of Lot 3 in Conway Park. Seventeen, consideration of recommendation from the Plan Commission in support of a special use permit for Kuro, a new sushi restaurant, proposed in the Westwood Square Commercial Development at 950 Northwestern Avenue. And if desired by council, waive first reading and grant final approval of this ordinance. Eighteen, consideration of an ordinance amending the city of Lake Forest Liquor Code to increase the number of licenses available in Class C1 and C3. Also, this can be a first reading and if appropriate, final approval. Nineteen, consideration of an ordinance approving a recommendation for the Building Review Board, also a first reading if desired by council, final approval. Twenty, consideration of an ordinance approving a recommendation from the Zoning Board of Appeals. This is also a first reading if desired by council, final approval. Twenty-one, and last, consideration of a recommendation from the Plan Commission in support of approval of the updated city of Lake Forest official zoning map. It's a first reading if desired by council, final approval. I'd like to make a couple of informational inputs here. One is on 21. This is not a, the updating the Lake Forest official zoning map, this is not a unilateral set of new ideas. This is done every few years to bring current decisions of the zoning board and city council cumulatively and just literally to reprint the zoning map in its new or cumulative form. Also, it's somewhat misleading, and we're going to have a little more discussion here with staff about the terminology. There were several waive the bidding process on here, but that really is not the case at all. It's just the terminology we're sort of locked into by the way our current purchasing ordinance is written, when in fact, all of these waive the biddings involve long-term purchasing plans in conjunction with other governmental agencies. So, these are larger purchasing platforms, and it's a very important way for us to save money. There's also technological reasons, for example, in the case of the police radios, that we all be on a common platform of both technology but also the quality of the equipment. So, I might ask Deputy Chief Copeland come up just for a minute, because it's a big chunk of money, $315,000. Talk about the technology and the need for these radios, but also how the, we're part of a very large consortium on bidding and purchasing these.
Right, Mr. Mayor, members of council. So, the Starcom radio system is a Motorola proprietary system that was adopted by the state of Illinois. State police use it. Two-thirds of police departments throughout Lake County use it. So, our current VHF system, we've been on 30-plus years, starting to fail. We've had issues with maintenance of it. So, we started looking at last year, looking for something to improve the system. We worked with Highland Park Police and other members of our East Shore Radio Network, including Glenview Dispatch. We did testing around Lake Forest, Highland Park, Lake Bluff, Highwood, and various other places in the area to see if a new radio system would improve coverage and the quality of our system, plus also give us the ability to be interoperable with other agencies. A prime example would be, God forbid, something happened at the Vernon Hills Mall like happened at the Orland Mall last night, and we have to go to Vernon Hills to help them. We currently don't have any way to talk to Vernon Hills, Libertyville, Mundeline, Lincolnshire, to the other agencies that would be there. They would be in their own radio system, we're in our radio system. The Starcom radio system would give us the ability to all switch to one tactical channel, and we'd all be able to talk, and then we'd all be able to cover that entire mall and work as a group to clear it, look for victims, suspects, et cetera. When we went to look at the Starcom system, it's on a state bid price. Motorola has held the price. It's good till 2022. Since we're a part of the Glenview Dispatch system, Glenview helped negotiate along with us and Highland Park for 37% price decrease when it comes to buying the radios. The radios is the big expense. After the purchase of the radios, all we're paying for is yearly airtime. We don't have any infrastructure we have to keep up. There's no maintenance of towers or cell sites or anything like that. That's all covered through our airtime with Motorola. Our current radios are not made anymore. They're not supported. There's no parts for them, and they're trying to switch to a totally digital system. So, with this system, we would be able to, anywhere, we could talk to Lake Forest anywhere in the state. If we have to go to Gurnee to help Gurnee, if we have to go to Mundeline, any of our peer agencies, even if we have to go into Cook County, it allows us to roam into Cook County, assist Cook County units. Our detectives can go anywhere they need to go and still talk back to our dispatch. Some of the people that we have with the NIPIS unit, with the Major Crash Accident Team, with some of our detectives that are on the Major Crimes Task Force, they can go anywhere and function as a unit, and all their radios will be the same. So, I get that it's a large chunk of change. We've used money out of the E911 system, out of our asset forfeitures from drug and DUI, and then some money out of our minor equipment, because we kind of knew this was coming, you know, down the road for a while.
You've been saving up for it, I know. When will it be basically fully installed?
So, Highland Park, they went live with theirs in November. So, they've been up and running, patched into our system for a little while. With, our plan is to, if it's passed tonight, we'll start signing memorandums of understanding this week. Then we have to order the equipment, so we probably won't be going live till around May 1st is our hope. We don't have to pay for airtime until July or August. They gave us a little bit of grace period on that. We have to order the equip, all the radios, they have to go to Chicago Communications to be programmed, then they'll send them to us for testing, then they'll send their people out to do in-service training for us, because our officer's going to have to learn how to use a radio that basically has almost 200 channels on it. So, if they have to go to Vernon Hills, how do they switch over? How do we, how do we use, when we set Lake Forest Day? We can have our own tactical channel for Lake Forest Day or 4th of July. We have our own channel. Deerfield will be able to have their own channel. Highland Park will be able to have their own channel, plus our regular road coverage will be on a separate channel, so we're all not walking over top of each other.
So, these other communities, are they going to have to have Starcom as well? Is this rolling out throughout the state, or?
Well, two-thirds of the communities in Lake County already have it.
Okay.
We're, like I said, Vernon Hills has it, Mundeline, Lincolnshire, Libertyville, I think Gurnee, Waukegan, Lake County, they already all have it. So, eventually, it's gonna, it'll take over the rest of the county, especially with the consolidated dispatches.
Thank you, Chief.
Sure.
Very much.
Any other questions?
In the same vein, I'd like Fire Chief Pete Seibert to come up. Also, a fairly large purchase of some equipment, but again, it's done off of a common purchasing platform.
Yes, thanks, Mr. Mayor, members of council. Just to tack on to what Deputy Chief Copeland said, we're also purchasing some radios, a lot smaller amount, but ours are dual-band capable. It will allow us to communicate with the police. Fire's a little bit different, not to get into a whole radio class here tonight, but there's, we're a lot less people using Starcom, maybe two or three departments in the area. But this will give us the capability to communicate to those departments, plus use our current system. So, we're only buying seven radios that will be capable of doing both, but we were able to buy some radios from Knollwood when they parceled off all their equipment, and we got 11 radios for $1,300 that will extend the life of our radios. And just as Deputy Chief Copeland said, Motorola's a proprietary system around here, and there's one vendor in the area. So, the fact that we're getting with somebody that's a state bid, we're getting guaranteed an even better price through Glenview Dispatch, and we've all done our due diligence to find that best price. And going along with that, with the air packs, I'm glad we were able to come up here and talk about those tonight. I did want to recognize Deputy Chief Kevin Cronin. He did the lion's share of all the work. I just signed my name on a lot of the grants, but he's the one that swept these big documents of the AFG grant. We were looking at a four-year process of putting $70,000 to $100,000 aside in the capital. This grant afforded us $213,000. We'll see if FEMA's open soon and can help us out. We're having a little trouble getting a hold of people on the phone, but rest assured, that'll all clear itself up. But what that does is that only required us to match a 5%, which was, I believe, $10,000, right, Kev? And then we had to purchase some extra air packs for our hazmat team. So, altogether, we're looking at about a $35,000 outlay out of the capital. But again, what we're getting back to is the company, MSA, who we've used for over 25 years, we went out to them. We also contacted three other vendors. We got people to bring out air packs for our guys to train with. What do you, what's the newest technology? What's the best out there? And look at some price quotes. It just so happened that MSA, who we voted unanimously through the people in our department, we had to put a vote out after testing them, they wanted to stay with MSA. They turned out to be the best price, because we're going to trade in for that. Plus, we already have a current relationship with them for service, and it's an outstanding company, and they happen to be a member of what's called the Houston-Galveston Purchasing Co-op. So, that again, gives us that guarantee of the state bid. I don't, I can't go out and say, I need an MSA air pack. Everybody come in and bid. They have certain territory, and these are the people they give us, and we're getting a great price for it, and the grant is, just makes it all that much better.
Well, good.
I know the bidding thing can cause some confusion, but I'm willing to answer, if anybody has any questions on the grants or either one.
Any questions? Yeah, well, that's terrific. That's, you've, right products, right equipment at the right price. Thank you.
We're excited, thanks.
Very much, Chief. Any particular questions or thoughts on the omnibus items as we always do or can do is remove any for separate consideration?
I just have a, just, I would just like to make a couple of comments about some of these and call them out. I don't have questions about them, but, you know, when you read out that we're selling city property to our city manager, we're not selling City Hall to him. We're selling some, we're selling some laptop computers that he's been using, just so that, you know, we just sort of clarify some of this. He's not walking out of here with, right, with his desk. And also, I think it's worth pointing out that there's a recommendation to rename Openlands Park to Veterans Park, and I think that's significant for the community and probably way overdue that we have something devoted to our veterans in this town. So, I just wanted to sort of call that out. And then, I would like to just get explanation, I don't know, for the public about what's happening with this Bannockburn deal and also with the reimbursement to the Lake County Forest Preserves, just a brief discussion of those two issues.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. The third amendment to the Bannockburn Agreement has to do with the property located to the south of Mariano's. You may recall, 18 months ago, the city council approved a second amendment to the Bannockburn Boundary Agreement. That allowed Bannockburn to annex the property on which Mariano's was built. And because that property through the boundary agreement was intended, was designated to be annexed to Lake Forest, we actually are receiving a share of the sales tax from Mariano's. The Beeson property, the remaining Beeson property located on the northeast corner of Route 22 in Waukegan is designated to be annexed to Bannockburn. As part of the boundary agreement, however, it is designated for office development. And really, to look forward and to position this property better, to really set the stage for it to be annexed to Bannockburn rather than to be approved for development as an unincorporated property in Lake County, it really makes sense to align the zoning that would be allowed on the property with what currently is allowed if it were to be developed in Lake County. Currently, the property could be developed with Lake County approvals as commercial property. Given that Mariano's is to the north, Bannockburn Green is to the south, it really is logical from a land use perspective that this property be permitted to be developed commercially. It really should be annexed to Bannockburn. Bannockburn is best positioned to serve the property. Assuming it's annexed to Bannockburn, Bannockburn's aesthetic requirements would be put in place, both for design of the building, landscaping, and remember that the city of Lake Forest serves as the permitting and inspection agency for Bannockburn, so we would receive those revenues. So, this really came out of a discussion with Bannockburn to really assure that going forward, given the development that's occurred in that area, that when the property owner comes forward, or a future property owner comes forward, that it is developed with proper services and really with the right oversight from a design perspective. So, that is why that is before you tonight.
And we have something to do with it because we...
Because there's... Because there's an existing boundary agreement that, actually, I know Bob and I think Drew worked on 20 years ago. And that agreement, again, was really visionary, to assure that that property would ultimately be developed either in Lake Forest or in Bannockburn, rather than as, essentially, an unincorporated island. The property has development rights, it could be developed. We were able to work with Bannockburn, with the city council, to amend the agreement to, to allow Mariano's to be annexed into Bannockburn. Bannockburn is really better positioned to serve that property than Lake Forest is, from police service delivery, from water service. So it, it really, again, I, I think those planning efforts, land use planning efforts 20 years ago, really helped to assure that the ultimate development of that parcel happens in a way that really benefits both Bannockburn and Lake Forest.
Thank you.
Second item was the...
Forest Preserve Trees.
The request before you for authorization to allow us to reimburse Lake Forest County Preserves District up to $20,000 for, for some plantings that would be done on the east side of the railroad tracks, east of the new practice fields that were constructed by the Bears. About 18, 24 months ago, before the practice field projects got underway, we held a number of meetings, Bears representatives, Forest Preserve District representatives, representatives of Open Lands, and, and the city, and really talked about how we could handle or best leverage the replacement dollars for the trees that were going to be removed. A number of, you have the number in your packet, but about 2,100 inches of heritage trees were removed to allow the practice field to be constructed. Remember that that property actually was designated for office development. So either way, that property could have been cleared, rather than practice fields, which, which don't emit light, we could have had a five-story office building and the associated surface parking lot. So the trees were removed in your packet, or actually, earlier today, I sent you a detailed breakdown. In our discussions about how to replace those lost inches, many, many suggestions were offered to the Bears. In fact, as we moved through the project, the Army Corps was involved, Lake County Stormwater Management, and you will see from the information that I provided, that the Bears not only met the requirements, but significantly exceeded the requirements, even exceeded the dollar amount that would have been required to replace the lost tree inches. So following up on our discussions with Lake County, we want to make these funds available to them. They want to do their own plantings, given the sensitive nature of the Middle Fork Savannah, they want to do some plantings of one-inch trees, certainly preserve the open prairie, but position those trees in a way that they begin to not only screen the practice fields, but also provide some additional screening for the railroad tracks. As a follow-up with the remaining money, we will be working with Lake Forest Open Lands and go out to bid for some further plantings, perhaps in the range of about 70 additional trees, as we find locations. Does that answer your question?
Absolutely, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
I have one other question that, on the sushi restaurant contract, and this is directed to the city attorney, there's an indemnification clause in the agreement with the owners, as I recall. Agreement. You mean the special use permit? Or the? The special use permit with the owners, and, yeah, and there's, there's a discussion that the owners will indemnify for losses. I don't have it in front of me. But my concern was that an indemnification agreement without insurance backing it up might not be worth much.
That is our standard special use permit ordinance language, but we can certainly review it with the city attorney and make any changes if appropriate. But it is consistently used throughout our ordinance documents.
Because there's an, yeah, they agree to indemnify the city against loss. Again.
We will take a look at it.
All right.
Before we finalize it.
Thank you.
Any other question? Please.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, this is also a sushi restaurant comment. I don't know that there's anybody here tonight from the sushi, is there anybody here from the sushi restaurant? I just want to say, I'm delighted by both, the fact that the sushi restaurant is coming in, we need a restaurant at that location. I think this is, this is a good location, and it, and it sounds like there were 14 conditions that they, that they met, and this was carefully reviewed. I'm also pleased by new ownership in that, in that whole project, the Westwood Square Project. It needs updating, it sounds like that's going to happen, and I'm just thrilled by all of it. So this is really just my, an expression of my, I'm not even a sushi eater, but maybe I, I could become a sushi eater, but I have grandkids who are, and so on, so. But I'm delighted, it sounds like it's just really going to be a terrific project.
Yeah, well, it's in good hands with local content, with the Altoonian builders and family.
Yes, yes, terrific.
As the owners and renovators of Westwood Square. Any other questions, comments from council? On the omnibus, the world record omnibus.
That was quick.
If there's not, I will ask for a motion in a second to approve.
A second.
A second, or whatever.
So roll call vote.
Alderman Beidler?
Aye.
Alderman Morris?
Aye.
Alderman Newman?
Aye.
Alderman Rumel?
Aye.
Alderman Reisenberg?
Aye.
Alderman Preschlach?
Aye.
Alderman Moreno?
Aye.
Alderman Bushman?
Aye.
Eight a, zero n, motion carries.
Thank you. Next item on the agenda is new business, and I, this is council approval regarding the renaming of Open Lands Park to Veterans Park, and I, Joe Mobile from Superintendent of Recreation will present this matter, which is overdue here at council by at least 100 years, by my count, a specific count. Or put another way, what other town, village, or city in America does not have such lands or monuments set aside? With that, Joe.
Thank you, Mayor, and members of council. So I'm here this evening to ask councils to approve changing the name of Open Lands Park at the corner of Green Bay and Deer Path Road to Veterans Park, as has been mentioned. It is long overdue. We've gone, since the city has acquired the property through LandSwap, we have held a community vision session in August, and we talked about what should the park be? What should it include? Amenities, look, aesthetics, events, and including possible names. We've worked with Bergman to develop a plan. We have met with the community a second time to kind of show the design and the plan. And at each of these two sessions, we have had discussions regarding what should the name be? And through the process, we've, we had four names that stood out. Heritage Park tied to the history of the property and, you know, the location. Gateway Park being the start to the gateway to the community. Central Park, again, being tied to the downtown area. And then Veterans Park, which really struck a chord and stuck out with staff, as well as other members of town. We've had discussions with members of the American Legion, we've had email communications from the past living mayors that are all in support of the Veterans Park. There is no substantial memorial or really tribute to, to our veterans. We have some plaques in different areas, however, naming this park gives the community, you know, that substantial, that substantial memorial that I think is duly needed. So, you know, naming it Veterans Park, we are looking at, and actually, I'm working with a local young man who's working towards his Eagle rank through the Boy Scouts of America. He's very passionate, he and his family have been affected by veterans and the war, so he has come, I'm meeting with him actually later this week, to kind of get some ideas. He's researched different communities, what they are doing, and we're looking at putting something in that park as a memorial, whether a flagpole or another type of structure that, you know, can host events, whether it's Memorial Day, or Labor, or not Labor Day, but Veterans Day, and different, you know, bringing them to the park and bringing the community to the park to recognize and celebrate, you know, our current and past military veterans. So at this point, you know, if there's any questions, otherwise, I am asking council's approval. Oh, and before I do that, we did take this to the Park and Recreation Board at the December 4th meeting. It was attended by many Legion members, as well as community members, and, and some of the past mayors, and, you know, it, this is the right thing to do for the community. I think it is a necessary thing to do, so I'm going to ask for your approval. If there are no questions, if there are, I'll be happy to answer any, any questions you may have.
Any questions, thoughts? Thank you, Joe. Hearing none. May I have a motion to approve, in a second, to re-approve the renaming?
Some move.
Second. This is a voice vote, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? We now have a Veterans Park. It's just, on reflection, it's just been a remarkable set of circumstances down through the years, why this hasn't happened. And be that as it may, we now have it done right, and that's all that really counts. Next item is additional items for discussion and comments by council members. At this point, I'd like to turn it over to City Manager Robert Kiley.
I don't think he was expecting. Just saying.
Oh, he's final, he's the final comment.
I have a feeling that these aren't for me.
They look very lovely.
I know.
It's a critical question.
That's right. But I, only because Biddy has provided me with insight, is that these flowers are for somebody very special to me, who has supported me, not just the 28 years I've been here, but since we've been married a long time. And is someone who has, I think, taken a lot of phone calls at strange hours. She's been, I don't want to say accosted in the grocery store, but she got very good at when people would say, "Are you Bob Kiley's wife?" She'd say, "No, I'm not." We thank you very much for all of your support, and I appreciate it very much.
So I didn't expect to take my coat off. I have something for my grandson. Bob respects all of you so much, and the staff so much. I know he will miss you, but anybody that wants to help with him, call him, but I do not know where I'm going to be with him. I'm really busy. And if you want to help me babysit, just send forth your resume, and we'll look it over. I don't like, you know.
Perfect. At this time, I'd like to introduce Drew Irvin from the Village of Lake Bluff, Illinois, to make a presentation.
I originally came here, thank you, Mr. Mayor, and city council members, and everybody here in the audience. I originally came here to honor Bob Kiley, but now I'm most impressed with this omnibus budget, and, you know, I have a lot of regrets myself, Bob. And you can pull those types of agendas off and get all that done, that's remarkable. So hats off to you and staff for pulling that off, well done. I'm here, not so much as the neighboring village administrator, but more as a friend of Bob Kiley, and also as, I'm representing the Illinois City/County Management Association. Unfortunately, the Secretariat Don Peters and the Board Chairman Michael Cassidy of the ILCMA couldn't be in attendance tonight, but I happily raised my hand and said, "I would love to go and honor Bob Kiley for all his work." So I'm going to do a little bit of reading here, so I don't miss a word, but first, I'm going to talk about the purpose of the Illinois City/County Management Association. The purpose of that ILCMA is to foster and encourage the personal and professional development of its members, in order that they may better serve their communities, and to promote, encourage, and preserve high ethical standards for municipal and county government management professionals. ILCMA is the official statewide organization unit in Illinois, representing the International City/County Management Association. And Bob Kiley has an extensive participation and formal leadership role in both the ILCMA and the International CMA. And I'll try to read these, and I kind of tried to summarize them, because the list is long, and you've already done a very long list tonight. But Bob has served as a leadership development mentor since 2015. He has served on the International City/County Management Association Executive Board as Regional Vice President from 2011 to 2014, a very distinguished honor. He's also served on the Digital Strategies Advisory Board, formerly known as the Knowledge Network Advisory Board, from 2012 to 2013. He served on the Conference Planning Committee as Chairman from 2008 to 2009. He was also President of the Illinois City/County Management Association from 2005 to 2006, and served on that Conference Planning Committee as a member back in 2004 and 2005. He was a board member with the ILCMA from 2002 to 2004, and he was also on the Conference Planning Committee as a member back in 1992 and 1993, and somewhere in there, he also became your city manager, and served you very well as well. So really, after nearly four decades of service in local government management, Bob has personified, I'm sorry, personified the mission of the International and Illinois City Management Association through his encouragement and development of professionals and countless other local government officials to the benefit of their respective communities, including me and Lake Bluff. Like the impressions Bob has left on this fine community, I think Bob's impact on city management will be felt for a very long time. So from all of us, from the Illinois City Management Association, we wish you all the best in your retirement, and I'd like to share this, it's not really a resolution, it's a plaque, if you will. It says, "In the retirement of Robert R. Kiley Jr., the Illinois City Management Association is proud to contribute $100 towards the ICMA Fund for the Profession." So Bob, again, thank you so much for your work.
Bob, stand up. Thank you, Drew. Terrific. So you did that in your spare time, Bob. You've got to be a good manager to do that. Next, I would like to ask the city clerk, Margaret Boyer, to please step forward. Ah, what treasure is this? What's it say? It says, "Robert R. Kiley Jr., City Manager, City of Lake Forest, 1990 to 2019." What could this be? Open this up. Oh my gosh, look. It's not the Dead Sea Scrolls. But, not to put too fine a point on it, it is intended for the ages. They will age well, I'm sure. So let me undo this, they're very carefully wrapped here. Now, Bob, there's an innumerable number of suspects involved with this, so, that you cannot possibly finger, so just lean back in your chair and listen. "This is a resolution of appreciation to Robert R. Kiley Jr., City Manager, November 1990, January to 2019. Whereas Robert R. Kiley served as a city manager of the City of Lake Forest from November 1990 through January of 2019, the longest ever-serving city manager in Lake Forest history. And whereas during the past 28 years as the city's chief administrator, Bob has worked with 12 mayors and city councils to en... with 12 mayors and city councils to ensure the delivery of high-quality services while maintaining the long-term financial stability of the city organization and the Lake Forest community." It's also easy to say, isn't it? "Whereas Bob has upheld a strong commitment to ongoing professional development for himself and his staff, and according to his staff, quote, 'making us better people,' close quote. And whereas Bob's strong passion for public service and municipal government is first and foremost in his professional life, second only to his devotion to his family. And whereas Bob has been happily married for over 37 years to his lovely wife Allison, a retired teacher and swim coach, and together they have raised three children, Sean, who is a regional sales manager with a multimedia and technology company, Colin, who works in education, Chelsea, who works in hospitality and in vet management, spending time happily babysitting and spoiling their three grandchildren, Briggs, Hunter, and Brooks. And whereas Bob earned a Bachelor of Arts degree in political science and urban studies from Lake Forest College in 1979, where he received his first taste of Lake Forest, where he met his future wife Allison, enjoyed beers at the lantern, was hired to watch over the property, if ever there was a fox in the penthouse, and occasionally opened the pool at the empty Schwepi mansion on Mayflower Road. There are records, I'm sure, certifying this. And whereas Bob received a Master of Public Administration degree from the University of Kansas in 1981, becoming also a Jayhawks fan to this day. And whereas the residents of Lake Forest were first introduced to Bob's public service career when he was hired as the Assistant to the City Manager in Lake Forest from 1980 to 82, when he was responsible for the preparation of the annual operating budget, supervision of the Office of City Manager Personnel, administrative staff to the Community Youth Committee, the forerunner of Croya, provision of general supervision and coordination of all administrative and operating activities. And whereas as Assistant to the City Manager of Lake Forest, he developed and implemented the Lake Forest Incremental Service Budgeting System, reorganized the city's maintenance service, instituted an employee survey feedback program, and supervised the first restoration of the East Side train station. And whereas Bob left Lake Forest to accept the position of Assistant Village Manager in the Village of Willmette from 1982 to 86, and City Administrator for the City of Prospect Heights from 1986 to 1990 before returning to Lake Forest. And whereas Bob was personally drafted by then-Mayor Charles Clark, who takes all the credit, it says here, to return to Lake Forest in 1990 as City Manager, and Bob and Allison moved back to Lake Forest where their three children attended Cherokee School, Deerpath Middle School, and Lake Forest High School. And whereas City Manager Robert Kiley attended and provided his leadership at 672 city council meetings, 672 executive staff meetings, yes, the city is a record-keeping organization, 336 management staff meetings, 112 ward meetings with residents, 168, I can't possibly have the time, close quote, lunch meetings with the Lake Bluff Village Manager, the Lake Forest and Lake Bluff Public School Superintendent, the President of Lake Forest College, and the Chairman of Lake Forest Hospital, 112 quarterly meetings with local real estate broker professionals, 336 meetings with Lake County City Managers and Village Administrators, 336 meetings with the Lake Forest/Lake Bluff Chamber of Commerce, and other meetings too numerous to identify and quantify. And whereas Bob has always demonstrated a strong commitment to his career and the professional development of those around him, and has been an active member of numerous municipal and other government organizations and committees, serving as Vice Chairman and then Chairman of the Illinois Municipal League's Legislative Committee, as Midwest Vice President of the International City/County Management Association, as Treasurer of the Northwest Municipal Conference, and Chairman of the Intergovernmental Risk Management Agency, which is one of our larger cost-saving operations ever invented. Whereas, in addition to other accolades, Bob has been recognized as a credentialed manager by the International City Council, City and County Management Association for his education and experience, adherence to high standards of integrity, and a commitment to lifelong learning and professional development. Amen. Whereas, in honor of their graduate school classmate who passed away at a young age while serving as village administrator in Lincolnwood, Illinois, Bob and fellow city managers established the Sommer Foundation, organizing golf tournament fundraising events to put underprivileged high school students through college. And whereas Bob has made no secret about his soaring passion for Chicago sports and his favorite teams, only missing crucial Cubs playoff games, to preside at city employee recognition dinners, and offering his season tickets to fellow employees when available. And whereas Bob enthusiastically helped champion the Deerpath Golf Course renovation project, not only recognizing his own love for the sport, but the course's value as a heritage amenity and a place for his three grandsons to learn and play the great game. And whereas Bob's many accomplishments during his tenure as City Manager in Lake Forest include, but are not limited to, Lake Forest becoming a home rule community in 2004, renovating City Hall, Dickinson Hall, Sterling Hall, and the Rec Center. This is a long list.
Are you going to finish with that this evening?
Yeah, well, we're going to, we're going to try. Purchasing and developing Town Line Park on Route 60, constructing a new LEED-certified municipal services center along with the sale and redevelopment of the former municipal services center property into what is now known as Kelm Scott Park, stabilizing and revitalizing the business operations at Gorton Community Center, structuring countless, and it is countless, intergovernmental cooperation agreements and operational efficiencies, maintaining the city's AAA bond rating and the lowest tax rate in Lake County while continuing to provide exemplary city services to Lake Forest residents. Another amen. Centralizing police and fire dispatch, expanding rehabilitating the lakefront water treatment plant, redeveloping the Grove Cultural Campus, including Dickinson Hall and Sterling Hall, establishing the Lake Forest Collaborative for Environmental Leadership and developing the Lake Forest Sustainability Plan, improving the Western Avenue streetscape, improving the Medians streetscape on Route 60. Now, that was a hard job. We had to fight the state of Illinois. Promoting the city's four corne-- someone once told me, "It was the only time you ever got mad at a staff meeting." I mean, it was a positive story. Like, we will get this done by such-and-such a date. Promoting the city's four cornerstones of family, educational, tradition, and philanthropy, developing Settler Square, hosting BMW golf championships in 2013, 15, and 17, a prodigious effort, establishing the Welcome Home marketing campaign, rebuilding the East Side, rehabilitating the East Side train station twice. He was here a long time. Redeveloping Fort Sheridan, redeveloping Elawa Farm, expanding the Lake Forest Fitness Center, renovating and expanding City Hall, developing Halas Hall and Conway Office Park, expanding Lake Forest College's science building, new dorms and football field, rejuvenating Deerpath Golf Course, developing Middle Fork Farm subdivision, developing Conway Farm subdivision, organizing and hosting the 100th anniversary of Lake Forest Day in 2008, organizing and hosting the city's sesquicentennial celebration, that's the 150th, in 2011, rehabilitating Ragdale, assisting facilitating the relocation and expansion of the Lake Forest/Lake Bluff History Center, establishing the McCormick Nature Preserve partnership with Lake Forest Open Lands Association, redeveloping Forest Park, and retrofitting the 431 beloved gas lamps in the city with LED bulbs which replicate and emulate the historic charm of these gas lights. And whereas even Bob Kiley's smaller accomplishments being no less important than the larger ones include very thoughtful processes and decision-making, as in personally selecting the color of the signposts so that they match the color of the bark on the trees in the area blending into the community. And whereas the staff of the City of Lake Forest will miss the many instances when Mr. Kiley would preface a statement with one of his favorite colloquialisms such as, quote, "We're going to try this program, and we may stub our toe, but," close quote. All is encouraging the City of Lake Forest and staff to take a leadership position on the new initiative. And whereas Bob Kiley met regularly with all employee work groups, keeping them in the loop in what is going on in the city, and having conversations about whatever was on their minds. And whereas through these employee meetings, Bob was always forthright, even when the news wasn't positive, but feeling it was more important for employees to know from him first what they might read about in the news or hear from residents later. And whereas from his vast experience, Bob gave the remarkable gift of guidance and mentorship to his staff, providing opportunities for growth through challenges, support, camaraderie, and the belief that the staff would produce nothing short of excellence. It's a great gift, Robert. And whereas Bob's monthly management staff meetings provided vital city-related information to the group, delivered with professionalism and, most importantly, humor, creating an energized can-do atmosphere throughout the organization. And whereas Bob is currently an adjunct professor in the Continuing Studies Program at Northwestern University, and whereas Bob's dedication, creative mind, strategic and visionary thinking, easygoing manner, likability, and sense of humor, and, most importantly, his integrity are trademarks that will ever be fondly remembered by citizens, officials, and employees in every city he has served. And whereas Bob has achieved all of this success, both personally and professionally, despite his devotion to his family and his golf clubs. Now therefore, be it resolved that the City Council of the City of Lake Forest, Illinois, hereby expresses the profound gratitude of the citizens and employees of the City of Lake Forest of Robert R. Kiley Jr. for his unprecedented loyal and faithful, loyal and faithful 28 years of public service performed. And be it further resolved that this resolution be appropriately inscribed and conveyed to Robert R. Kiley Jr. with a copy to be included in the official minutes of the January 22nd, 2019, meeting of the Lake Forest City Council. Signed, RTE Lansing Mayor, Margaret Boyer, City Clerk. May I have a motion to approve this resolution?
Some move.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Bob, step forward here. We're going to give you this scroll for the ages.
It also has to be the longest resolution ever written.
Well, we weren't going to let you get out of here.
Matches up with the omnibus.
Good point.
And I might ask Sean and Allison. Round and round. So here, circle around. Bob, you hit the bell here. Start it now.
I know it's not a street sign.
Do you have one of those, though?
I think it's friends of every. Yeah, every city count to me. Oh, boy.
Nice.
This is a picture that was recently taken of all the former mayors that I have worked with, with a few exceptions.
Yeah, it's, the vast majority of us. This was a December dinner we had with Bob, and it's remarkable, so if I forget, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, 10, or 11 of the 12. Yeah. And so it works all. We had a delightfully, let's hope we get it in order.
Thank you. Thanks very much. Very special.
Got to get autographs for that. Got to get autographs. Yeah.
Autographs is nice.
Would Director of Public Works, Michael Thomas, please step forward?
Are you ready, Bob?
A lot of creative minds went into this thing.
You know, for the next 72 hours, I can still fire you.
I know you can. Listen to speeches, and I remember that, believe me. Yes. Believe me. Okay. So fabulous gifts for a city manager. We obviously, Bob, I could give you a bag of salt, some old membrane filters, some asphalt, some copper pipes, some used oil, but we're actually going to go with a street sign. We all remember the Route 60 project and the Medians. And Mr. Mayor, as you had commented, that morning, well, actually, it was one of my favorite Bob Kiley moments, April 15th, 2013, do you remember it?
Staff remembers, yeah.
7:30 a.m., Bob called a meeting with all of the Parks Forestry Public Works Supervisors, all the superintendents, everyone from engineering, and the two directors, myself and Marion. We were jam-packed in the Savannah conference room at MS, all tight. Bob walks in, 7:30, sits at the head of the table and says the following, "There is a lot of brain power in this room. I want you to figure out how you're going to do these Medians. I will be upstairs. Come get me when you have a plan. You have six weeks, $230,000." You stood up and walked out, and all of us went, "Huh." Best part, though, was that you got us motivated to get that done, and we were able to get the project done on time, under budget. So, Bob, the first--
And to great result, too.
Great result.
Interest to Lake Forest, too.
So the first side, Bob, is Bob's median. But it is all in the tax median, but it is now officially your median. The other side, whenever we have had issues, long-term issues with contractors, maybe residents at times, and Bob, as you can tell, he's getting frustrated because we keep coming back saying, "This isn't working. What should we do? What should we do?" And you can tell because Bob's face begins to turn red, and it gets redder and redder and redder. So we bring options, and Bob says, "Fine, go back to them, tell them they can pick. We're either doing one, or we're doing two, and..." Bob Kiley's way of saying, well, I can't say it, but, Bob, I can promise you, we've never told any resident, "Have a nice day," after we've given them an ultimatum. And if you think there's any options to sort of change course, maybe skip a Christmas in Cincinnati, forget it, Bob, it's Allison's way. So congratulate me.
It's always been her way.
It seems to me, Mike, that Allison should get the "Have a Nice Day" sign as well.
He'll flash it. But thank you very much, Bob Kylie, for all the time, all the leadership. You've taught us a whole lot. First and foremost, you've taught us to own it, and for that, we're very appreciative. So, thank you.
Yeah, I echo that thought. I think the finest thing you can do in the workplace is to grow your fellow employees and make them more productive and satisfied and contributors to what they do. Many, many examples across the city staff over the last 28 years. At this time, I invite council members for any parting thoughts with, for Bob.
Start with the first word again?
First word, we'll go with the first word.
All right, thank you, Mayor Lansing. Bob, as I look out at this wall with the pictures of all the mayors that you've served with, and I now see you have a memorial to take with you, it's truly an amazing journey in the story of your commitment and support for our community. I mean, Mayor Rummels here, I see Mayor Preslack up there, it's been quite remarkable. Just to put your service to Lake Forest in context, I really like this point, go back to when you started in 1990, Beverly Hills 90210 was a hit show. Home Alone Version 1 had just been released. Jay Leno was still hosting The Tonight Show. But more importantly, Beanie Babies were a big deal at my house, if you can remember that far. Lake Forest was clearly a different place in 1990, and Elawa and Middle Fork, Savannah were just getting created, and we don't have to go down your list again with all the accomplishments that you've had. When I try and think of your tenure, it's difficult for me to measure the many successes that you brought to our community during your term as city manager. Really remarkable. I have served only a short time on the council, but I've appreciated your wisdom, your calm demeanor, your broad knowledge of municipal operations, your ability to react positively to cities, city residents' requests, your steady hand on the municipal tiller, and your thoughtful advice for the city council. Well, let me give you some advice. This is advice that my spouse gave me, and I think Allison will buy into this, which is, marriage is for better or worse, but not for lunch. I'm certain that won't be a problem for you, it doesn't sound like so. Best wishes to you in the years ahead. Thank you.
There are many reasons to praise Bob Kylie for his 28 years as city manager of Lake Forest. I'm gonna focus specifically on his commitment to public-private partnerships as a way to get things done here, and particularly, the three partnerships on which he and I have both worked. In about 1996, Bob assembled representatives of the four garden clubs in Lake Forest as he did from time to time, taking the opportunity to update us on what was happening in the city that he thought we might care about the most. I think all of us present were surprised by his sense of urgency about Market Square, which had been built in 1916 as the country's first shopping center that anticipated regular use of cars by shoppers. We all saw Market Square as hugely important to Lake Forest, both as a shopping center and as a public square for gathering. I think we probably thought it seemed okay. But Bob told us there were significant infrastructure issues that needed tending, above and below ground importantly, and the time had come to make renovations where, and improvements where possible. Bob was clear that the city would handle the infrastructure updates, but his hope was that private dollars might be raised to create a beautiful landscape plan which could serve well into the new century. Initially, Lake Forest Garden Club paid for a landscape plan and urged two of its members, Chrissy Cherry and myself, to be co-presidents of an independent 501(c)(3) board called Market Square 2000 to help oversee the project and raise the money. I think it was about a million and a half all in. Our board worked hard from 1997 to a bit beyond 2000, and overall, it was a successful project with participation from over 400 members of the community as donors. Bob checked in with us regularly, offering guidance and support while City Forester Dan Reeves was the official city liaison on the board. Some years later, in the unfolding of a similar scenario, Forest Park was identified as needing renovation and improvement, and while the city could handle infrastructure, it was hoped private dollars could be raised to make the park more beautiful, open up views to the lake, and offer better walking trails and superb landscape plantings. This problem was a bit more complicated because some people thought the park was just fine as it was, needing no change. The project needed momentum to get the community on board, and that came when Bob himself spoke at a public meeting and announced that Forest Park, the city's first public park and its only park on the lakefront bluff, was sorely in need of updating both infrastructure and landscape, and that we could make it spectacular if we committed to the project. It was clear he did not see this as optional. And then he said, and then he said he would be the liaison to the Forest Park Project Board. His strong commitment to this project ensured that it happened, and the increased use of the park by residents today is testament to his vision. Fundraising had been okay before Bob stepped in with his clear voice and strong commitment, but afterwards, it was very, very solid. And I might also note that we had great support from Mayor Don Schoenheider. Finally, when it became clear to the city council the Deerpath Golf Course needed updating, a public-private partnership was the obvious approach. This project, still underway, is a bit different because no independent board has been formed. Instead, the Friends of Parks and Rec, which is a tax-exempt group, is accepting the contributions. But commitment at the leadership level is just as important it has been with every other private partnership in Lake Forest, and they have existed almost since the town's inception. One of Bob's great gifts is combining vision, enthusiasm and planning with leaning on others to help. He is generally an active participant, always aware of what's going on with these projects, but he is not a micromanager. Bob leaves this job, but not the town, and as he drives around Lake Forest in these next relaxing years, he will be reminded at multiple places in this community of how critical and element his leadership has been to the success of our public-private partnerships. And for all people who were involved in those partnerships with you, I say thank you, Bob.
Well, of all the people who sit here today, and I can say, including all of the however many mayors you've served with, I am in the unique opportunity of knowing your family before you were city manager. Allison taught my daughter how to swim at the Marriott Lincolnshire Pool when she was maybe five years old. And I can remember talking with Allison about her husband, who worked for Prospect Heights. And we'd have conversations back and forth, I think I might have been on the school board at the time, and I remember her telling me that he was going to interview as city manager for Lake Forest. And so we go back that far, and our paths have crossed as families throughout the years. So Allison started as a teacher to my daughter, and then both of our children were in school together throughout their elementary years, with Sean and my son Jared both being on the swim team together at Lake Forest High School, with Sean always bringing those necessary diving points to the swim club. And so, you know, started out as sort of a teacher to my family at a very early age. And then, and then with Mike becoming mayor, Bob was a huge mentor to him as mayor. And then Mike, you know, went on from mayor to the county board and to be finance committee chairman at the county level. And I can't tell you how many times he said to me that everything he ever learned about municipal finance, he learned from Bob Kylie. So, thank you for all of those years and what you've meant to my family as mentors and teachers. And to this community, I think you've been an exemplary family, and I mean that very sincerely.
Yeah? Okay. I had the opportunity to serve on a couple of different things in Lake Forest. I was on the caucus, and then I was on the planning commission for six years, but neither of those institutions did I really have much of a chance to work with Bob. A couple of years later, he asked me to be on the golf advisory committee, and that was really my first time to work directly with Bob. And I remember the first night that we unveiled the master plan in front of a somewhat hostile crowd, some of whom had been drinking. One in particular, pretty heavily. Thankfully, she's moved away. But things were a little heated, and I was kind of flopping around, and I just, I looked over and I got that look from Bob, that look that said, "Tim, it's gonna be okay." You know, and Bob has that ability to make everybody around him better. We moved forward with the master plan, and now Deerpath Golf is in the best shape it's been in a long time. So, that to me is an example of how Bob makes everybody better. The turnout of the staff here tonight to wish him well at his final city council meeting is tremendous to see. The respect that he engenders from everyone will be his legacy. I'm also pleased that his vast knowledge will not go to fallow as he continues his teaching career. So, Bob, I wish you and Allison and the family the very best going forward, and I look forward to teeing it up with you on February 12th in Fort Myers. And you and I can get into Alderman Reisenberg's wallet a little bit on that. My very best wishes to you.
Let the games begin.
Yeah, let the games begin.
Bob, you are the consummate professional. You're clearly the best in class. You were the shining star during our dark hour, and I want to thank you for the opportunity to learn from you. Thank you very much.
Yeah, I want to say thank you. I mean, I think there's a lot of servants to the community that don't hear that enough. And just listening to that scroll, it's almost overwhelming about all the, I guess, the resume accomplishments you have, but all the personal lives that you've touched, including my own, thank you. So, thank you for the 28 years of service, and thank you for your love for the city and your job. They say if you find something that you love, you'll never work a day in your life, and I think you really accomplished that. Thanks for the love and dedication that you inspire in your staff. It's so evident that, in talking with them, there's such high respect and admiration for you as a person and as your ability to lead and to solve problems. I thank you for helping me get on board the council, you know, in such a thoughtful way. There's never a dumb question with you, and I really, really appreciated that, and I know everybody else here probably appreciated that as well. And I've only been on a couple of months, but thank you for the gentle way that you've guided the council for the last 28 years. I think the consummate pro is really apropos. If you come up with an idea and you're all excited about something, you're so good at saying, "Yeah, that's great," and you just gently kind of nub the energy in the productive direction. And that's a real art and a skill, because you're trying to bottle the enthusiasm and put it in a productive way. So, thank you so much for doing that, and thank you so much for not moving and being here as part of the community to tap into and inspire others to serve and to share your knowledge and experiences. And have a great retirement and teaching career and just time with your family. So, thank you, thank you.
Recurring theme, how profoundly difficult it is to say thank you to our city manager. With so many years of service across every function, across every not-for-profit organization and public-private partnership, excuse me, you've interacted with me and with everyone to have a positive impact on every aspect of life in Lake Forest as we know it, a life that we prize. The city's accomplished so much. I had no idea about the scroll, but I, it's phenomenal. I don't know how you have time for all those meetings. You've managed through good times and difficult events, and you've celebrated and helped all of us celebrate a wonderful quality of living. It's with great respect and a degree of sadness that I extend my personal thanks to you. I'm bidding farewell to an era, and that's never an easy thing to do. Bob, you have set precedent for city management and community leadership in so many ways. Your thoughtfulness and knowledge-based leadership have been a guide to me and to many council persons before me. Thank you. It's an inadequate expression of gratitude. I say it with sincerity and appreciation. Thank you.
Bob, I'm not sure what more I can add to all the accolades that you deserve so much for what you've contributed to our community. I've known you only half of the 28 years that you've been here, when I served on the board and the committee, but it came across very clear early on how you ran an excellent administration, how you showed that you had the knowledge, the leadership skills to run the city in a way that really produced excellent results, and results that my fellow councilmen have enumerated over and over. You possess such outstanding administration skills in so many ways, and one in particular I'd like to acknowledge is your ability to attract, hire, train and direct the best municipal staff we have. It's truly a compliment, and so the Kylie School of Management gets an A-plus rating. Very good. And your skills shine so much more when you consider the type of job you have. You mentioned to me the complexities of the job, and, you know, you really do operate in a glass house. You do need to deal with being a public servant, need to deal with the concerns of the citizens, need to service the citizens, and, you know, sometimes you find the citizens can have different opinions, different perspectives on things, may even have what we'll call idiosyncrasies. But, you know, it's a job that came with a lot of complexities, and you're able to deal with them. And since I only knew you for half your career, I try and think back, what were you really like back in 1990 when you started the job? Was your hair darker, or less wrinkles? Yes, you were more slim and fit, you really do that. But then I try to think, were you a neophyte? Were you the beginner on the job? I say no. I don't know you as that. I never have known you as that. I bet you you came in the job and you fit like a glove, and you showed that you could be the right person in the job, as you proved over and over, and a job you've done so beautifully to help our city, to beautify our city, to better our city. Thanks so much. Well said, Ray. Thank you. I've said, made many remarks to Bob in recent weeks, even the last few months, myself, but I will also make the, here tonight, the expression of thank you and really gratitude on behalf of the entire citizenry of Lake Forest, and in particular, I know so many folks on, citizen volunteers on our boards and commissions and council, and certainly all the mayors with whom you worked, just a huge sense of gratitude for who you are. You know, you wake up in the morning, you're energized, you're leaning forward, you're thinking new ideas. I bet you you came in the job and you fit like a glove, and you showed that you could be the right person in the job, as you've proved over and over, and a job you've done so beautifully to help our city, to beautify our city, to better our city. Thanks so much.
Well said, Ray, thank you. I've said, made many remarks to Bob in recent weeks, even the last few months, myself, but I will also make the, here tonight, the expression of thank you and really gratitude from, on behalf of the entire citizenry of Lake Forest, and in particular, I know so many folks on Citizen Volunteers on our boards and commissions and council, and certainly all the mayors with whom you worked, just a huge sense of gratitude for who you are. You know, you wake up in the morning, you're energized, you're leaning forward, you're thinking new ideas, how do we do this, you know, better? Constant improvement, and doing it in a way that improves everybody around you. How lucky we've been to have you, really. Very, very lucky. And I think at this transition, how lucky we are that you're going to remain part of this community, which you have come to love and to care for and nurture, protect, defend, and, and I know you'll keep doing it, that you're here. Now, Sean, you cannot move. You're the anchor that's keeping him here, so. So, we were very, very, very lucky to have had you these, all these many years. And so, we're now at the moment when our esteemed city manager, Bob Kylie, makes the transition from serving and giving so much to our community, back to what is most important, focusing attention on his family and himself. Allison, Sean, Colin, and Chelsea, thank you all for sharing your husband and father with us for 28 years. With gratitude, we send him back to you with which, all best wishes to, to all of you for many happy, healthy, and fun-filled years. And Sean, I'd like you to step forward and say a few words.
All right, I'm gonna read from this, because I won't make it through it if I don't, but I'd like to start, before I, before I get into this, I'd like to thank everyone for their kind words tonight and for being here for my dad. You know, it's, it's humble, oh, God. It's humbling to hear your words, and it means a lot to me and my family, people that know my dad, that have worked with him, know his integrity, his passion, and his love for this city. It really means a lot to us, so thank you so much for your kind words. My name is Sean Kylie, I am the eldest and wisest son of Bob. And I'd like to thank you for allowing me to speak on behalf of my family at my dad's final council meeting here at Lake Forest. I've lived in Lake Forest pretty much my entire life, and this is actually my first council meeting. And it's not because this isn't riveting, this is riveting stuff you guys have here. But there's honestly just never been a need for me to show up. I know every day that we have the best city manager in the world, that comes in here every day, you know, into this office. We're all here today because we like, love Lake Forest, right? And, and with due respect to everyone, no one loves this town more than my dad. For the past 28 years, he's given everything that he has to make this city the best that it can be. Everything we love about this city, the beaches, the parks, the education, the fire and police, the health and hospitals, Gordon Local Businesses, the list goes on and on, and my dad has had a hand in everything with the sole focus of making Lake Forest the greatest city in the world. Even outside of work, he attended Lake Forest College, where he met my mother, Allison. All of his children were born here in Lake Forest. He coached our Little League teams at the rec centers, plays his weekly round of golf at Deer Path, he shops local here in Lake Forest as well. This isn't just a job for my dad, it's, this is his community, this is his home, and it always will be. But Dad, as they say on one of our favorite shows, Game of Thrones, "Now your watch has ended." You're still alive, though, so you're okay. You're just retiring, so that's all.
Go on, tell him winters.
And there's some jokes in there, obviously, that we could make about that, but, you know, I, I know that our community in the city of Lake Forest will continue to flourish, and, and we want to wish the new city manager, I don't believe he's here tonight, but we want to wish the new city manager and his, and his family good luck going forward. He'll have an amazing staff, great alderman, a great mayor, to help him lead the way into a new era for Lake Forest. I've been told by many people over the past month that, that Jason reminds them a lot of my dad, and honestly, I can't think of a better, I can't think of a better compliment. Dad, your ethical leadership, your passion, your empathy, your love for your staff and employees, and unwavering commitment to this city, your job and these residents has set the standard, and your legacy will be unmatched for years to come. Excuse me. And as great of a city manager as he's been, he's been an even greater father to me, my brother, and my sister, who can't be here tonight, but they wish they could be. He's always been there for us when we needed him, and his guidance and support has helped us grow into the people that we are today. I wouldn't be the man or the father that I am today without learning from the best parents that you could ask for. I practically moved next door to them, just so I could be there and have my kids experience what great grandparents they will be to them. Colin, Chelsea, and I love you so much, and we're so proud of everything you've accomplished and can't wait to support you in your retirement. Before I wrap up, I wanted to thank the staff and the employees of, of Lake Forest. I know that leaving this job is not going to be easy for my dad, and in a big part of that is because of you. You guys have embraced us within the community and within your families. I can remember, you know, after school in junior high, I would walk up here and, you know, grab a slice of pizza and then come sit in the office downstairs and watch TV, raid the refrigerator, and do my homework after work. You know, you have been a part of our extended family, and we'll, we'll miss you, we'll still be around, and I promise to still bring my boys into City Hall and bother you now and then and complain about, you know, anything that might be going on. So, here we go, Dad, it's time to, it's time to turn the reins over and let go. No more calls from Mike Thomas at 11:00 PM to discuss snowfalling. Mike, you can call about the Jayhawks, and that's pretty much it. No more police reports to see if any of my friends have made the blotter. It's time to relax, it's time to work on your golf game a little bit, and more importantly, babysit your grandsons. We love you and we're so proud of you.
Well, Robert, perhaps a few thoughts from you, and as they say in Hollywood, take yourself out.
Thanks, Mike, I'm never gonna hear the end of that. Well, I'll try and get through this, because I don't want the headlines of the Lake Forester to say, "City manager and son cry like a baby in the final meeting." But I've, obviously, there's a lot of emotions that I'm feeling right now, some happy, some sad, because, you know, it's funny, because when you attend, I don't know, what was it? A thousand meetings, you always think about, what will I say at the final meeting? And then the day comes, and then you can't think of anything to say. First and foremost, though, I need to say thank you to a lot of people. Thank you to the city council, both past and present, for believing in me, for supporting me, for supporting the staff. I think the community doesn't appreciate the quality of elected officials and appointed officials that we have in this community. You know, kudos to the caucus for doing their hard work and making sure, every year, there's quality, talented people who are willing to step forward and serve. It's not easy, particularly when you think about how many boards and commissions that we have for them to find that many talented people. But, you know, the staff was always amazed that we'd lose somebody good, and we'd think, oh, it's gonna be horrible to lose that person, and the next person coming right behind them is equally talented and committed to the community. So, I truly hope that the caucus continues their hard work, and I hope that many residents, present and future, continue to step forward to serve, because the staff is nothing without a supportive city council and boards and commissions. And while we put in an awful lot of time, board and commission members do, and other than an occasional dinner, the pay isn't that great to, to serve on these boards and commissions. Certainly, thank you to the staff. You know, the other thing I hope that the community understands is the quality of staff. And when people ask me what I'm most proud of, it's quite frankly, the staff, and, and the comments that were made by the council members, certainly, I would echo 10 times over. I'll tell you a little story that we just talked about this morning at a staff meeting, that one of our plow drivers was out and saw an elderly woman who was trying to go in and have her hair done, having trouble navigating her car and also walking in. He stopped his plow truck, he walked her in to where she was gonna get her hair done, parked her car, because it was cockeyed, took her keys back in, then got back in his truck and continued to plow. And I think that tells you a lot about the quality of staff that we have. Excuse me. You started me, yeah, that's right. But it really tells you the quality of staff that we have. They are committed, and they are dedicated to this community and to the residents of community, and their passion is, is, is high as certainly mine is. And that's what made it fun coming to work, and Alderman Preschlech, you're absolutely right, every day was a joy to come to work in Lake Forest, because of the talented people, the fun people to work with, and we were all committed to one thing, which was making Lake Forest a better place. You know, I'll tell you a secret now that I'm leaving. You know, it, it's funny, and DaShay knows this, but for me, it was never about the compensation. When people would ask me what I'm paid, I'd have to call DaShay, because I really didn't know what I got paid, because that wasn't important to me. The two things that really drove me was, was my family proud of me? And then, more importantly, was, was it in the best long-term interest of the residents of Lake Forest? And that would occasionally put me at odds with residents, because their interests didn't align with what I thought the interest should have been for the betterment of the full community. But beyond working here for 28 years, I knew that I was gonna live here longer, and I've always been a member of this community, and so I did things not because it was just for me or something I wanted to do, but I thought that it was something that would well serve the residents of this community for years and years to come. And, you know, it's nice to sort of reflect back on projects like Forest Park and some of the other ones, because, you know, I can't remember of a single project that everybody embraced in town. Somebody was always opposed to it, but you had to believe in that the final outcome was going to be something that the community was proud of, and I'm pleased to say that that was always the case. And in many cases, particularly ones with public-private partnerships and ones that would go to boards and commissions, it would exceed my wildest imaginations on how they would turn out, whether it was Forest Park or Market Square or the golf course or that whole list of projects that you read out. So, as it's been said, I'm not leaving the community. I'm sort of like the quarterback who's moving to the sidelines to let a younger, very talented quarterback take the reins at this point in time, but I will continue to be on the sidelines, cheering for all of you and all the staff. So, thank you.
May I have a motion to adjourn this meeting?
So moved.
All the favor, we're adjourned.